Good evening and welcome to the third public hearing of the Board of Education of Anarundel County. Tonight, we will hear from the public on the board recommendation three of the Phase Two redistricting plan as described during the public briefing on November the 12th. The plan center on altering boundaries for schools in the Annapolis, Arundel, Broadneck, Croftons, Runaway Park, South River, and Southern Clusters. As it did in Phase One of the redistricting process, AACPS worked with WXY to examine enrollment patterns across the schools in the clusters. The board is scheduled to vote on adoption of a redistricting later this month. The adopted plan would go into effect in the 2026 and 27 school year. The link to sign up for public comment for tonight opened at 3:00 PM on Saturday, November the 8th, 2025, and it closed on Tuesday, November the 11th at 12:00 PM. We will begin with virtual speakers this evening and then move on to in-person speakers. Speakers will be allotted two minutes each. We ask that you be respectful of the time limitations so that we do not have to mute people or turn off the microphone in mid-sentence. You may not allocate any portion of your time to others. If you are not present or do not speak up when it is your turn in the order, we will move you to the end of the list of speakers. We will provide one additional chance for you to speak after we get through all of the remaining speakers. If you are not present at that time, you will not have an opportunity to speak. For the record, please state your name before speaking. Handouts may be given to the board's executive assistant. Those who have missed their opportunity to speak may email their comments to the board office at boardoffice@AACPS.org. If you provide testimony tonight, you are not eligible to speak on Monday, November the 17th. The light in front of me on the dais will flash yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining. Then a red light will appear and a tone will sound when your time has expired. I will call the first five speakers. Once called, please come forward. You may choose to speak from the podium or from the witness tables, whichever you prefer. So we thank everyone for joining us this evening. Once again, we're going to begin with our virtual testimony. Our first person testifying this evening is Rebecca James.
Can you hear me now? Okay. My name is Rebecca James and I'm the mom of two girls. Fiona, a ninth grader at Crofton High School, and Brooke, a fourth grader at Nantucket Elementary. Tonight, you are going to hear new information. And before anything else, I'm asking you, as a parent and as the very first speaker, please listen. You are not being rated on whether you pass a plan. You are being watched by every family here to see what you do when you are presented with new information that challenges what you've been told. The fastest way to lose a community's trust is to defend a decision simply because it's already been made. The fastest way to build trust is to show a willingness to make new choices when better information becomes available. Our community has done the work. We have read the policies, asked the hard questions, and gone directly to the source, the source to understand the new decisions are being made. We are not here with opinions. We are here with facts. But I need to bring this back to what matters most, not the numbers, not the charts, not the process. Children, real families, real consequences. My daughter Fiona said it best at the November 3rd meeting. Being on this team is not just about playing soccer, it's about belonging, leadership, and growing with people who feel like family. This proposal would take that away. Brooke, my youngest, watches her sister walk into Crofton High School with pride. She sees her future there. She believes that if she sees, she works hard, she can follow her sister's footsteps. This plan tells her, no, you do not belong with them. You are being asked to split this community forever, not just for a year, not just a temporary fix, but in perpetuity. If you are going to, if you're going to do that to children, there better be an extraordinary reason, not a convenient one, not a theoretical one, not an extraordinary one. Because when you look at my daughters, when you look at all these children, the question is not, can we do this? It's, should we do this? And I'm begging you today to listen to the new information tonight. Show the community that presented, when presented, with better truths. You choose a better path. Thank you.
Our second speaker is Jennifer Thomas.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Thomas. I'm a mom of twin fourth graders and I thank you for this opportunity. I apologize I can't attend in person. I'd like to address the changes in the Broadneck Cluster, specifically the move of the students from Belvedere to Arnold Elementary. The redistricting changes shoehorned the area south of Maggo Vista, including Jones Station Road, into a assignment to Arnold, which is geographically unnatural and further away. Belvedere has been the area, our area's elementary school for decades and is a foundational keystone of our neighborhood. And while yes, Belvedere is currently slightly above capacity, this move will bring it below optimal capacity while adversely affecting the lives of our children. Kids and parents know the teachers, the routines, and have strong friend bases in their current school. The change is traumatic and is especially impactful to the fourth and fifth graders, not to mention the adverse impact on families with the loss of the aftercare for those enrolled in the SKP program. But in the event that you firmly believe the greater good is worth the trauma to these kids, please, and this applies to all elementary school changes, please reinstate the allowance for fifth graders to finish in their current school. These are the last of the kids who started school during the COVID pandemic and they had a pretty shaky and uncertain first few years. Fifth grade is hard enough without having to start over in a school where they know barely any of the kids at best and none of the teachers, none of the routines. Fifth grade's a big testing year and a change this big is likely to doom their test scores and impact them for years to come. The kids have spent their formative years at Belvedere and want the teachers and staff who've been with them the whole time to be at their promotion. They've raised funds for the school for five years. They like visiting their teachers. They lose their whole school identity with this change and the impact of that loss and the loss of their entire social network can't be understated.
Your time has expired.
Thank you. Jack Winston.
Good evening, I'm Jack Winston. Good evening, I'm the uncle to Crofton students who live in the Nantucket community. As someone with no children in Crofton schools, I never thought I'd intimately know the details of redistricting. But hearing my niece and nephew speak about the pain this process has caused them and their perception that this board doesn't have their facts right, I felt compelled to better understand the process and get involved. Tonight, you will hear from a number of community members who will clarify the deep misunderstanding this board and seemingly the staff members leading the school system have about how funding for capital projects work. I would like to clarify one specific detail. At the last meeting, Mr. Morgan asked Mr. Roof about adjacent to adjacent schools. Mr. Morgan said, I'm just trying to clarify that when one school is over capacity and the adjacent to the adjacent schools are under capacity, it doesn't just impact that those three schools. To a certain extent, when a school is over capacity, it doesn't just impact that school and surrounding schools, it also has a wider effect. Correct. Mr. Roof gave a very roundabout answer in which he used the term overcapacity three times. I want to be very clear, overcapacity schools do not in any way impact funding at adjacent or adjacent to adjacent schools. It is only schools with available seats, schools that are under capacity that impact funding. If there is a project for which this board or this school system wants to gain state funding, then the focus needs to be on minimizing underutilization at the schools near the one where you want to build. I've only been diving into these issues for a week and in one week's time, it's becoming exceedingly clear that this process began with the wrong goal. Your stated goal is to get all schools under 100% capacity, when in fact, having schools at over 100% capacity helps funding. Your goal all along should have been to get every school over 85% capacity. Please don't split articulate the Nantucket community. It won't do anything to fund the projects you want to fund. Thank you for your time and for your consideration. Have a great evening.
So we're now going to move on to our in-person testimony. Once again, I'm going to be calling five people to come on up first. First of all, we have Jessica Weider, Lindsay Rourke, Clint Jardine, Erin Palakowski, and Connor Caminiti. Once again, you have the option to testify from the seated or from the podium. Jessica.
My name is Jessica Weider and I'm a Nantucket parent. Tonight, you're going to hear new information that proves that AACPS can get state funding without split articulation. We understand that the only way to change your mind is to present you with new facts. So we did the research and what you'll hear tonight has been verified by the Interagency Commission on School Construction. At the last meeting, it became clear that split articulation is being justified as a funding decision. It's because you have been told that Crofton High School being over capacity could cost county-state funding. Let me get something 100% clear for you. We asked the IAC, could leaving a school like Crofton High over capacity reduce funding at other schools within the same region? The answer was no. Not maybe, not it depends, no. Crofton funding is only penalized, school funding is only penalized when adjacent schools have lots of empty seats. Crofton High's projected utilization has no negative impact on any other school's funding. Let me repeat, no negative impact on any other school's funding. So if moving Nantucket kids is a funding decision, how much money does Anarundel County actually gain? So let's talk about the only funding benefit we were able to find for split articulation and that's Arundel Middle. So if you look at the numbers, if you leave students where they are, the state funds about 41.2 million. If you implement the board's plan, the state funds about 42.7 million. The difference is 1.5 million. Because the county has a 50% cost share, to receive 1.5 million, the county has to contribute an additional 1.5 million. This is not free money. Splitting Nantucket pushes Arundel Middle to 111% utilization into a building that already needs restoration and permanently fractures the community every year forever. The fiscal gain is marginal. The harm to children is permanent. We ask that you verify our math, talk to the IAC. Thank you for hearing us tonight.
Lindsay Rourke.
Good evening, my name is Lindsay Rourke. I've been a public educator for 16 years and our family's been part of the Belvedere community for the last eight. Our daughters are current fourth graders. Thank you for taking the time to hear from this. I know this is not easy at all. I also understand that redistricting is never easy and that we believe that empty seats lead to loss of funding. I understand that. You also acknowledge that this will cause harm. And then what I haven't understood is why reasonable attempts to lessen that harm have been dismissed. So as you know, our children are not numbers on a capacity chart. They're part of the generation that carries much more than a lot of adults could handle. Many were preschoolers during COVID. Their sense of stability was fractured before it could ever fully form. Teachers and counselors see every day how hard they work to manage emotions and relationships. So stability is not a small thing, it's everything. When Ms. Schallheim proposed a small amendment to let families of rising fifth and eighth graders the choice of whether to move to a new school or finish out their final year, six of you voted against it in the name of equity. But I don't believe equity is creating more instability so that everyone struggles equally. Children who have waited five years to close this chapter with their classmates who've worked to earn safety patrol acceptance into a club, these are not offered at the new school. All of that disappears and that is not equity. And I have to name a small procedural inequity. Families with time and money and networks were hurt early and accommodated. Parents already stretched thin where either unaware decisions were being made for their children or they were ignored after doing the legwork to understand how they were affected. I know that Dr. Tobin shared that your experience as a military child and I understand that my husband's a retired Marine, so we know what constant moves can do to children. We fought to give our stability as many families have here and this plan takes that away. So we're asking for one small adjustment, please, to allow rising fifth and eighth graders the choice to finish their final year in this school where they already belong. One year is not enough to belong to the new school. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Clint Jardine, parent of three elementary school children. Just want to add my voice to the strong opposition that we have here against the split articulation you propose for Nantucket. Just want to cover a couple of quick points. One, Route 3, the facts are the facts, it is a public safety issue there. The numbers are the numbers, you'll hear more numbers after me. 77,000 drivers go by that northern corridor from Rydell to the end of Route 3 every day, causing traffic nightmares as well as accidents. I myself have been sandwiched and suffered a totaling of my car. Also, secondly, probably most importantly, please, we encourage you, follow your higher authority guidelines and obligations from the State Board of Education, which mandate from their precedent that all decisions here for redistricting have to be reasonable, i.e. have to be consistent with sound educational policy and also have to be not arbitrary and not capricious. So ask yourselves, if you go through this decision process, is splitting off 0.7 of the last end of Rydell to kick off 100 kids, is that reasonable? Is that not arbitrary, capricious? Also, when you look at the precedent, they all go the opposite way of what you're creating here. They all go towards agreeing with and affirming where the local board has reduced or eliminated split articulation, reduced or eliminated traffic congestion or bus transportation issues, reduced or eliminated public safety issues. This is what you're all creating with this split articulation proposal. Also, they mandated that 15% have to be the threshold and here you're much less than 15% for the changeover. Also, this is consistent also with the capital improvement numbers you've heard already, you're going to hear more. Please be mindful of these obligations, be reasonable, not arbitrary, capricious, as you go through and reconsider your proposal. Thank you.
Erin Palakowski.
Hello, I'm Erin Palakowski and the amendment to expand the legacy from fifth to eighth graders was opposed on the grounds of inequity, hardships to families, possible staffing issues, out-of-area transfers being readily available, and the lack of Phase One precedent. It's not that black and white. Did you know that two of five of the legacy elementary schools in revised BR3 do not or offer before care while their redistricted schools do not? I've heard from families who are facing hardship and now financial burdens because they have to find new childcare options. Did you know that the plan places 108 fifth graders at Arnold Elementary next year? They'll have to add a fourth classroom and they'll put 27 students in each, yet their legacy school already has four fifth grade classrooms with 24 students only. Until I watched the last board meeting, I was unaware that out-of-area transfers even existed. It took me a good amount of time to both find it on the website and decipher how to apply. I will boldly say that this existence is not common knowledge and nor has it been shared publicly as an option. In addition, can the board members promise that the redistricting changes are taken into account for legacy applications so that the 90% rule will not deny students based on capacity data that will no longer be valid? The challenges faces in Phase One and Phase Two are vastly different. Phase One moved over 6,000 students, staffed new schools, and still offered legacy to 483 12th graders. Revised BR3 moves only 700 students, 12th, 5th, and 8th grade by next year. And that's only a third of those offered legacy in Phase One. This is the chance to do better. These 10-year-old and 13-year-old children are the ones that are most negatively impacted and face two years of change. The lack of a transition jeopardizes them both emotionally, academically, and also their established support systems. Please, let's focus a little less on the outcome and start to care about how we get there. Reconsider the legacy amendment for the young students who stand to gain the most from it and show them that you care about them. Thank you.
Connor Caminiti.
Good evening. You might remember me. I'm the fifth grader at Nantucket Elementary who told you about how split articulating Nantucket would make me a part of the other kids in Crofton. And then last week, I watched five of you vote in a way that shows you don't care about kids like me. That felt awful. I want to talk about one particular board member tonight. Dr. Tobin, you said last meeting, as the child of a US Foreign Service officer, I moved not only schools but continents and languages every year or two, growing up. But I need you to understand how your experience and what you would do to kids like me is so different. We wouldn't be moving. We would be staying in the exact same homes, in the exact same communities, and you'd be telling us that we don't really belong here. I'm sure moving is hard. I'm really lucky, I've never had to do that. But at least when you move, you get to explore a new place and meet new people. Of course, you'd leave people behind too, but those same people don't become your rivals. If you make us the other kids, we'd be staying in the same place and the kids who I have been friends with, teammates, and fellow musicians with will soon be my rivals. Instead of competing together on the field or the stage, we would be competing against each other. I'd live in the same place but no longer be a part of that community. When you actually move, you become part of a new community. Split articulation gives us no community. This isn't right. And even given everything that all the adults have shared with you over the last few days, we know now it truly is not necessary. So I will say it again, please don't create a generation of other kids in Crofton. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call out five more individuals. Clark Petry, Lauren Kirby, Tiffany Clark, Leila Demerg, and Matt Caminiti. First speaker is Clark Petry.
All right, my name is Dr. Clark Petry. I'm a proud parent of boys at Central Elementary and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I serve as an active-duty Navy commander and mathematics professor at the Naval Academy. My family and I have chosen Maryland as our home, where I'm going to retire from the service and we're going to raise our boys here. I'm here today as a resident of the Mill Swamp Road community. I want to briefly reiterate the safety concerns, my voice to the board previously, I think is worth reiterating. We brought this up throughout the whole process, that any redistricting that forces us southward with left turns on Route 2 is frankly dangerous. I know you previously heard from a school bus driver who reiterated the same. And I sincerely appreciate that the current plan keeps our community aligned with central schools, allowing safer right turns and northbound commutes for both the families and AACPS transportation. To the board and my neighbors and community members here tonight, I know that some of our broader community are pleased with the current plan and understandably, others are not. I deeply empathize with the challenge of guiding a process like this, something I voiced directly to Dr. Bedell at a previous hearing. I get leadership. As someone who leads teams, often environments where the cost of uncertainty is high, I've seen firsthand how prolonged ambiguity drains the very people we're trying to lead and those we want to serve. Our community is feeling that fatigue. Everyone I've spoken with, regardless of the map they prefer, just wants clarity and finality. We've done the work, we've shown up, we've engaged in good faith. At this stage, I respectfully requested the board avoid late-stage disruptions to the current plan and bring this process to a close, ending the uncertainty and just move forward confidently. In every command I've led, the moment comes when it's time to stop charting and begin sailing and that moment's now. My wife, Sherry Petry, was selected to speak tonight, but she regretfully cannot be here due to young children, so her apologies, she shares my sentiments. And lastly, apologies for my early departure from here. I have knee surgery bright and early tomorrow morning, so I will excuse myself. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Lauren Kirby.
Good evening. I'm Lauren Kirby and I'm the mother of a second grader at Central Elementary School. His four-year-old sister keeps asking me where she'll go to kindergarten next year and each time I have to try to explain that we just don't know yet. At an important developmental age when we should be building enthusiasm for education and instilling a lifelong love of learning, parents do not have the answers to give their kids about their schools and their futures. Like so many families, we have been waiting on pins and needles since last fall for a decision. Each twist and turn in this process has brought heartache. We have had divisions within friends and within communities. It has been a very long process and many families are eager for resolution that provides clarity and stability. That is why I'm here tonight to express my support for the revised board recommendation three. BR3 offers a solution that reflects voices of parents, teachers, and neighbors who have engaged throughout this process. To the board, I want to say thank you. Thank you for hearing this community feedback over the past 11 months. Thank you for your thoughtful deliberation in proposing this plan. We recognize that no plan will make everyone happy. This is a compromise. This is a compromise. There will be winners and losers, but we know that this will minimize disruption and help our schools plan effectively for the future. My community has come together around this plan. We have a petition that has over two hundred and thirty signatures and counting to endorse this proposal and ask the board to move it forward to a vote. These signatures represent families and parents imporing you to bring this process to a close. We need to support our kids. We would like to see the board endorse BR-3 and demonstrate that you're ready to move forward to action and to help our community heal. This stress and uncertainty of this process is untenable. Please, get us over the finish line. Give our students, families, and staff a final decision so we can move forward, give our kids confidence in their educational future for the 2026 school year and beyond. Thank you.
Tiffany.
My name is Tiffany Clark, and I'm the parent of a fourth grader at Folger. I'm respectfully asking the board to allow the rising fifth graders the option to remain at their school, even at schools that would otherwise be closed. For me, this change creates a logistical and financial hardship. I will lose my current before and after-care spots with no guarantee of getting one at the new school. Actually, there's no before care at the new location. I will be competing for a few after-care spots if any even exist. These are not minor changes. This will impact my work schedule, our routines, and increase my expenses. My son is more than a number on a spreadsheet. This isn't just about moving to a new school, it's new teachers and staff, new routines, new already-established social circles, new traditions, and so on. Our district prides itself on supporting the whole child, not just academically but socially and emotionally. Allowing our kids to remain where they've established roots aligns perfectly with that mission. Fifth grade is a pivotal year. This is a time when kids develop independence, confidence, and leadership skills. Research shows that stability in these final years help kids maintain both academic progress and emotional well-being. Moving them now, not only to only move them again another year, disrupts that growth and stability. Our kids deserve to experience the love traditions they watch over that others enjoy, the fifth-grade song that the teacher wrote for them, the talent show surprises, graduating with classmates that they've grown up with. My son has already expressed anxiety about the move. He told me, "But Mom, I've been going to Folger my whole life." He has been at Folger since kindergarten, and he feels connected and safe there. So please allow our upcoming fifth graders to remain at their current schools. It's a small exception that supports your values and honors the stability our children need to thrive. For my son, stability is not just preferable, it's necessary. Thank you.
Leila.
Hello, my name is Leila Demerg, and I am here again to tell you why you shouldn't move Crofton students out of Crofton schools. Last time I was here, I was ninth grade. Now I'm in tenth. This plan would go into place when I'm eleventh. I've seen the many challenges juniors face watching my brother go through it last year, and dealing with that on top of finding my place in a new school as someone with a disability, that seems like a lot. People always tell me that I'm resilient, and then I'll figure it out. However, I know this is a challenge I'm not ready to face. And also, on top of that, I would have the fear of crossing Route 3 twice a day during the heaviest traffic, making it even more dangerous and scary. As a person with a disability, going through high school every day is extremely overwhelming. However, I've gotten through because of my friends, family, teachers, administrators, and not to mention my brother. Next year will be my first year of high school without him. However, he's helped me build the community I have today, so I can tell you, I am ready. Moving would mean that I am almost completely alone. I also give you a perspective not many others have. I am a person with achondroplasia other than me. I know of three other AACPS students who have it. They are all siblings, and they do not go to Arundel, meaning that the school has never been introduced to someone with my condition. If things go the way they did when I entered elementary school, I'm sure I don't want to go through that again, explaining to everyone, the questions, the stares, the pointing, and the bullying. I love how at Crofton, everybody is used to it and treats me as a normal teenager. I'm not here to say Arundel is a bad school, but it's also not mine. However, if you choose to go through this plan, then I want all of you to go up to each individual student and their families and tell them that their sense of belonging, community, and sense of worth is nothing compared to numbers on a chart. And so please, I beg of you, just leave us alone and don't move us. Thank you.
Matt Caminiti.
Thank you. While I appreciate the desire of some residents to move this process along as quickly as possible, at the November 5th board meeting, it became clear that there are grave mistakes in AACPS's understanding of how state funding works. It took a team effort from this group of Crofton parents to dig into COMAR, IAC regulations, and the sufficiency standards to make sense of them. To help clarify, we put together the document you have in hand and the one you see before you. The overarching message we need this board to understand is that overutilized schools are not factored into funding considerations for capital improvements. It's the available seats at adjacent schools that impact funding. You can see that achieving the various goals for school construction and enhancements does not require split articulating children from Nantucket to Arundel. Here are the goals expressed by various board members at the last meeting and the impact Crofton schools would have. Number one, replacement of Southern High School. Crofton has no impact, but available seats at South River High School would. Two, improvement or replacement of South River High School. Crofton has no available seats, and South River High School qualifies as an aging school. The only impact on funding would be Southern's empty seats. Three, expansion of Arundel Middle. Per AACPS's seven-year projections, Arundel in Crofton will be overcapacity in 2033. It's possible that adding these children may increase state funding by up to one and a half million dollars, but it comes at the cost of, one, intentionally overcrowding Arundel Middle to one hundred and eleven percent, the highest middle school in the county. Moving kids from Crofton to Arundel overcrowds them in a school that will be more overcrowded than the one they leave, making their commute more dangerous by requiring them to cross Route 3, and permanently fracturing a community year after year after year. The bottom line is that AACPS has an undercapacity, not an overcapacity problem. Split articulating Nantucket doesn't solve this. Arundel Middle students already say it is nearly impossible to navigate that school due to its layout, and none of those students enduring the additional forced overcrowding will ever see the benefit of a new school. Please motion and vote to remove the amendment to split articulate Nantucket as it only causes harm with no positive impacts. Thank you.
Our next five speakers are Ryan Caminiti, Neil Sek, Levi Weaver, Jocelyn Crowder, and Nick Carlson. First speaker, Ryan.
Good evening. I am a proud sophomore at Crofton High School, and this year in AP Seminar, we are learning about how important it is to corroborate information over multiple sources. Ms. Bonjovi has taught us that if you hear something from one source, no matter how credible they may seem, it doesn't mean that what they say is true. I fear that the members of this board are not corroborating the information they've been given. Meeting after meeting, I have watched each of you ask Dr. Heiser excellent questions, and I listened as he gave answers. In the past week, many community members have attempted to corroborate those statements. Let me give you an example. At the last meeting, Ms. McFarland entered into a long line of questioning with Mr. Roof in which she was trying to understand whether it is overutilization that impacts funding or underutilization. Numerous times, Mr. Roof stated what is true. He said, quote, "You've had funding issues associated with adjacent schools having too many seats." And he said, "The number of open seats in adjacent schools, no matter how overcapacity you are at your current school, will affect the funding." And he said, "They're not going to fund or contribute to a project where there's available seats, and we could address it in a different way rather than capital expansion." And then Mr. Heiser came in and said, quote, "Just to add on to that, to put a finer point on that, if we don't redistrict these students from Crofton Middle, if there is a need to put extra classrooms or a wing of classrooms onto Arundel Middle School, that would not get funded." What Mr. Heiser said was the complete opposite of what Mr. Roof said. Mr. Roof talked the entire time about available seats, and then Mr. Heiser gives an example about my community and states that if Crofton is overcapacity, Arundel won't get funding. Well, we've attempted to corroborate that statement, and tonight we've showed that it is false. Please, do not split articulate the Nantucket community, my community, our community. It solves nothing. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm a parent of four kids that are currently in AACPS and have gone or currently going to Davidsonville Elementary. First, I want to begin by recognizing the Board of Education for the tremendous amount of time, effort, and thought you've dedicated to this rezoning process. I know this has not been an easy road. Countless meetings, data reviews, and community discussions have gone into getting us here tonight. Your commitment to doing what's best for the students and family across our district truly shows, and it deserves our appreciation. I know rezoning is never an easy topic, it impacts families, routines, and sometimes even friendships. But I also know that the proposed Revised Board Recommendation 3 before us wasn't made lightly. It was created using objective quality evidence through careful study on physical impacts, bus routes, and safety while balancing minimizing impacts to students. I also want to acknowledge that throughout this process, our voices as parents, staff, and community members have truly been heard. From the town halls to the surveys and conversations, it has been clear that the board took time to listen, to understand different perspectives, and to use that feedback in shaping that plan. That level of transparency and engagement builds trust, and reminds us that this is a community effort, not just a board decision. I support the Revised BR-3 map and the commitment to keeping communities together. This recommendation demonstrates broad support for a fair, thoughtful, and student-centered redistricting plan. By relying on clear, quantitative data and long-term planning, the board has set the foundation for a stronger future, one where schools are balanced, resources are used wisely, and every student has the opportunity to thrive in the environment designed for growth and success. Thank you to the board for your leadership and courage in making that decision that reflects both data-driven insight and a deep commitment to our children's future. Thank you.
Levi Weaver.
Hello, my name is Levi Weaver, and I am a sophomore at Crofton High School. I am here to stand up for Nantucket and ask you to vote no on the redistricting plan. Split articulation doesn't just affect the students who are redistricted, it affects everybody in the Crofton community. I don't live in the part of Nantucket that's included in the redistricting zone, but my best friends do, friends I've had since kindergarten. If this redistricting plan had been in effect when I was in fifth grade, I can't imagine how difficult middle school would have been. Almost everybody I sat with at lunch from sixth through eighth grade would have been gone. And now, it's hard to even imagine what my junior and senior years will be like if this plan passes. My in-school friend support system will disappear overnight, and I don't know if you realize how hard making friends midway through high school is. And the fact is, split articulation isn't a one-time adjustment. The same disruption and emotional strain will happen every single year to every future Nantucket fifth grader. I honestly don't understand how hard, I honestly don't understand how adults whose job it is to protect and prioritize students' best interests can view that as acceptable. And beyond that, I don't see what the problem this plan is actually solving, because Crofton High School is not overcrowded. We have no portable classrooms. I have B lunch on both A and B days, the most overcrowded lunch, and there are empty tables everywhere. That is not what overcrowding looks like. Furthermore, at no point is anyone advocated for or suggested an extension is needed to Crofton High School. In fact, we have been very clear that Crofton High School is sized perfectly for the students it has and needs nothing but to be left alone. Crofton High was built to serve the Crofton community, and Nantucket is part of that community. Breaking apart a thriving, connected groups of students and families doesn't fix anything, it only creates new, bigger problems. So I'm asking you to please vote no on this redistricting plan. Thank you.
Jocelyn Crowder. You're up next.
Good evening. I'm Jocelyn Crowder, a parent to Mason and Macklin who attend Nantucket Elementary. As you've heard from hundreds and hundreds of community members pleading with you, a decision that impacts students, teachers, and communities should not be made with inaccurate data. At the August 18th board meeting, a Crofton cluster enrollment by grade chart was presented to the board and public and showed on average, each grade from kindergarten through eighth increased by just twenty-one students between 2014 and 2024. Projections for the incoming kindergarten class of 2025 increases those same grades between 2025 and 2033 by a hundred and thirty students. That's a difference of a hundred and nine students for only one grade. The projections being used are grossly inflated. Mr. Silkworth has said in previous meetings that the resale of existing homes drives new enrollment, not new construction. Yet in the comprehensive Phase 2 redistricting report on page 32, it states that non-development enrollment, housing turnover, was not accounted for in the superintendent's recommendation. So which is it? For the Crofton cluster, residential development is declining due to limited space. Only one zoning change is pending compared to six for Arundel. And per Bright MLS and the Maryland MLS service, resale of homes in the Crofton cluster is at a ten-year low. Using Mr. Silkworth's metric of home resale, Dr. Bedell's metric of residential development, and historical enrollment data, all three metrics prove enrollment in Crofton is going down. Add to the fact that we now know from the IAC funding regulations and formulas that Arundel Middle and High would still receive funding without Nantucket students being moved. As Dr. Tobin herself said at the last meeting, if she could go back in time, she would. We can't. Time travel does not exist. We beg the board to please use this data that we now have to remove the split articulation of Nantucket so that we all aren't wishing we could go back in time. Thank you.
Nick Carlson.
It's me. First off, I want to say thank you to every one of you for your time today. You've had an incredibly difficult job, and I would want that outside of the fence there. So I'm not part of the Nantucket family, but they seem to have a very compelling argument. I want to steer everybody's attention over to the north side of Severna Park, at the top end of Ritchie Highway. There's a new community called the Reserve in Severna Park. And if you look at the schooling district and how they divide the children up, my basic desire is to keep the community together and keep it safe for everybody. My children have been a part of that community for a very long time. And where our new homes are, they are going to be shipped off to the Chesapeake High School District, which is fine, but that's a long ways away, and that community and those children, they don't know each other. And so my children know the community that we've been in our entire lives. I've lived in Marin County my entire life. So when you look at the bus routes and the way they will crisscross, the buses that come from the passing area to go to get our children, it's going to literally have to crisscross, and they're going to be very inefficient. And if you've ever driven on Ritchie Highway, much like Route 3, it's crazy. There are so many cars, it's very, very packed, and I think it'd be best if the buses didn't crisscross and make U-turns and go down Ritchie Highway. It's very congested as it is. So I would just like to see if you could possibly take a look at that area and maybe possibly redistrict some of those homes that are in the Severna Park area that are paying those taxes, that are beyond the sign, literally, on that side of the Severna Park side, and help us keep our children in the Severna Park area where they grew up and all their friends are, all their caretakers are. That's where they belong, that's where they live, and they enjoy it there. And I really appreciate everybody's time. Thank you, guys.
Okay, our next five individuals to testify, we have Scott Heckinger, Daniel Kenny, Jenny Connor, Sean Connor, and Samantha Weaver. First will be Scott Heckinger.
Good evening. Peer-reviewed research shows that school moves depress achievement. A causal study in education, finance, and policy found that within-district moves cut annual test score gains by up to ten percent in affected schools, a meaningful hit in a single year. A meta-analysis likewise ties mobility to lower reading and math performance, and broader reviews link school moves to higher risks of grade retention and dropping out. And it doesn't just stop at test scores. High school juniors specifically are at the peak of college readiness work, with requirements like AP sequences, capstones, teacher recommendations, and leadership roles. Mobility makes every one of those things harder. 2023 CDC research on school connectedness and risk is blunt. Students who feel connected at school do better academically and experience fewer mental health risks. Ripping students, especially juniors, out of established relationships undercuts them right where stakes are highest. Mobility also harms non-mobile peers and whole-school performance. District synthesis and state-level scans report that higher student turnover drags down average outcomes school-wide. So a mass transfer hurts both sending and receiving schools. There's a straightforward mitigation to this. Do not split articulate in Nantucket. And if you must, juniors must be allowed to be part of the legacy student plan. Many districts already allow juniors to finish where they started if they provide their own transportation. The choice is clear. The research tells us mobility hinders achievement, undermines the relationships that keep teens on track, and burdens all-involved campuses. Leave Nantucket students where they are, and if you must move students next year, please let juniors finish high school position for success. let juniors finish high school position for success. Thank you.
Daniel Kenny.
Good evening. My name is Dan Kenny, and I want to speak to the fact that the Nantucket split articulation is indefensible. Let's talk about Arundel Middle. Arundel Middle is already projected to be at 100% capacity next year without moving a single Nantucket student, and the numbers get worse. And let me demonstrate how they get worse. And these numbers are directly from the AACPS EFMP. So if we're looking at the 2027 AMS projected enrollment of 1447, and we add an additional 56 students, total enrollment of 1503. We divide that by the Arundel Middle state rate of capacity of 1389, it puts the percentage of overutilization 108.2. And at 108.2, that would be the highest overutilized school in the entire county, including elementary, middle, and high schools. But do the numbers get any better? They do not. They get worse. In 2034, the Arundel Middle projected enrollment is at 1494. Again, adding the 56 additional students brings the total enrollment to 1550. Dividing it by the 1389 SRC brings it over, the percentage of overutilization, 11.6%. Again, the most overutilized school in the entire county, including elementary, middle, and high school. This does not balance enrollment. And here's the part the public and maybe the Board has not been told. We confirm this directly with the IAC that overcrowding Arundel Middle does not magically unlock free money. So this entire plan is for net benefit of maybe $1.5 million, which is a little more than half a percent of the yearly $230 million AACPS capital budget. Let me be crystal clear. This is not about overcrowding within the Crofton feeder. It appears that this is about purposely overcrowding Arundel Middle, and the numbers prove this fact. This is why the community is having trouble believing what Dr. Heiser and his team are telling us, or having any confidence in the redistricting process. Thank you very much for your time.
Jenny Carner.
Hi, my name is Jenny Carner, and I'm the mother of four children. Two, two went to Nantucket when it first opened, all the way through. They went to Crofton Middle, and then they went to Arundel High School. Arundel High School is fine, it's crumbling, and something needs to be done about that. But, I mean, it's, it's the oldest high school in Maryland, and nothing has been done to improve it. But, but they got a good education. But it was very difficult for them, especially my older one. There was no other option. She, she managed and she made it through. But that was all four years of high school, you know, with the same group. Split articulation is just not good. I, comparing my first two children's experience with my third, who went to Crofton all four years, was completely different. It, we waited a long time to get Crofton High School, and we've lived there for 20, in the same area for 25 years, and we waited a long time. We were a part of the community that advocated for a high school. It was desperately needed. And I think honestly, it's ridiculous that you're even talking about redistricting Crofton High School after it's only been open for five years. Regardless of all that, if you decide to go forward with this plan and, and split their articulation, we have a son that is in, a junior, he's going to be a junior next year, and I am begging you, all of his friends are going to stay. And I know that seems like a trivial thing, but it is not. He, I, I would argue that junior year is just as important, if not more important, than senior year for, for students. He has tried so hard and, and is on the football team, and, and he won't go out for football next year if he goes to Arundel. He, he won't go to any of the school dances. He will not have, he will not have any of his friends going. They're his support system. We have a lot going on in our lives right now. And if he loses that, it's, it's going to be devastating. Please reconsider your, your, your legacy thing if you go forward with, with splitting them. Thank you.
Sean Carner.
Yeah, that was my wife, so there's some overlap. My son is a sophomore at Crofton High School, and this revised plan will force him to leave his friends, his community, his support system exactly what Crofton High School has created for him. Moving is not as simple as going to another building and picking up where 10th grade left off. School is more than a building. He isn't losing just his friend network, but an emotional and support network Crofton High School has given him. He has grown so much. In his sophomore year, as my wife mentioned, he will, when he moves, he will have almost no friends. He won't attend dances or other activities. High school is supposed to be the best years of their lives. I promise it won't be his. Lastly, on a personal note, teenagers are forced to deal with challengers, others like my son is going to be forced to deal with hard reality that no one in his age should ever face. When it happens, he will need not just his friends, but the support network Crofton High School has provided him. This move takes all that away. I will leave my son alone. Please be there for him now. That's all.
Samantha Weaver.
Hello. Everyone on this Board should vote no to this redistricting plan, and this is why. Ms. Pulliam, the Crofton community does not want to be divided again in any way, shape, or form. The only project in the future capital improvements plan for your district is a southern high school revitalization, and Crofton's utilization has no impacting on that, no impact on that project. Ms. McDermott, thank you for your continued support of your Crofton constituents. The Arundel community, community needs a new middle school, but Crofton's current utilization does not hinder the state's funding of that project. If you do not support the split articulation of Nantucket, I do not understand why anyone else on this Board would. Ms. Tobin, Dr. Tobin, my apologies. I've heard you advocate strongly for the relief of overcrowding in Annapolis High School for years, yet this plan does not move a single student from Annapolis. You trusted the data showing a downward trend in enrollment to avoid intervention there. Crofton deserves the same consideration. Our cluster enrollment is declining, and unlike Annapolis, Crofton doesn't have any proposed new construction projects that would cause an increase in the near future. Ms. Dent, Route 3 is dangerous. It has had more accidents this year than Route 2. The Board made adjustments in Phase 1 of redistricting to avoid Route 2 for safety reasons. It should make the same allowances in Phase 2. Ms. McFarland and Ms. Charleheim, thank you for your ongoing support of the Crofton community. I hope you continue to vote with your conscience, knowing so, knowing that doing so will not jeopardize any future funding projects. Mr. Morgan, you've heard directly from the Crofton students who have shared how split articulation would affect their sense of community and belonging. You are here to represent their voice with your vote. Mr. Silkworth, this plan does not reflect a careful or comprehensive redistricting, redistricting of the southern part of the county. This redistricting is unnecessary and creates disruption and without financial benefit. Let's prioritize stability and smart planning based on the actual problem facing funding over, underutilization, not changes based on false concerns over, about overutilization. Vote no on this plan. Thank you all.
I'd like to call up Alex Williams, Erin Kalaric, Kristin Caminiti, and Hudson Adamcheck. Our first speakers, Alex Williams.
Good evening. My name is Alex Williams, and I've got one of my three Crofton Cluster kids back here. She's more interested in K-pop than redistricting. But like so many families, we have invested almost a year in this process, just like you all. We've invested, and we listened, shown up, and operated under one clear goal set forth by AACPS: Bring as many schools under 100% capacity as possible. In my work, goals matter. They keep complicated projects on track and guide decision-making. But at the last meeting, for the first time in 10 months, we heard something entirely different, that this wasn't really about utilization anymore. It was about funding. And that shift made it feel like our children at Nantucket had become leverage in someone else's budget line. And when that goal changed, so did the facts. We don't need to be under 100% capacity to impact funding. And here's what's actually true, straight from the IAC like you've heard tonight. Getting Crofton below 100% doesn't help Arundel, doesn't help South River, and has zero connection, zero, to Southern High School because it's not considered adjacent. Continuing, South River has no planned modernization project for at least the next decade, so it shouldn't be a part of this conversation. But if it is, the IAC has said that Crofton being above SRC would actually bolster that argument. As for Arundel, you've heard tonight, it's fiscally minimal impact, and this shift would be, and it's not free money. Pushing our kids into a school that will be significantly overcapacity, not even counting the hundreds of homes still to be built, would be negligent. So the target we were handed for 10 months wasn't just arbitrary, it was wrong. It shaped votes and conversations, it confused this community, heck, it confused all of you. The facts are clear, we're asking you to make a decision rooted in evidence. I've spoken with each of you multiple times. Those conversations have been direct, respectful, and raw, and for that, I am grateful. That's what a process like this commands. More importantly, it commands clarity, it commands consistency, and it commands commitment to doing right by our children. Thank you.
Erin Kalaric.
Good evening. My name is Erin Kalaric, and I have taught in the county both public and private school, and I've spent the last nine years as a psychology professor at Anaron Community College, which is my area of expertise. I want to speak specifically tonight about the developmental need, actually the necessity, for legacy option for rising fifth and eighth graders. In this district, you have previously made thoughtful decisions that align policy with developmental science, including adjusting school start times to better match child and adolescent sleep cycles and align with daily academic times when we know their cognitive acuity is at its greatest. Those decisions demonstrated a clear commitment to doing what research tells us is best for our children. We know just as clearly that late elementary and early adolescent students rely heavily on stability, secure peer groups, and a sense of belonging. These are the years when friendships buffer stress and improve resiliency, when school identity becomes part of self-identity, and when major disruptions can have lasting academic and emotional impacts. This is why it is both confusing and heavily concerning that legacy allowances were granted for one group of students, but withdrawn for two other age groups, the very age groups for whom continuity matters most. So this begs the question, whose best interest does the Board have at heart here? Families reasonably believed a legacy option was likely. Had they known it would be denied at the last minute, some would have made very different choices months ago, including private school enrollment if finances allowed, changing before and after-care program, transitions that would have allowed their children two full years to build new peer relationships before entering elementary and middle school. Removing that option so unexpectedly has placed families in an impossible position and understandably makes us feel deceived. The number of students affected in our area is small, but the developmental stakes are high. We cannot expect children to learn and perform optimally
Please summarize.
when they feel these added elements of stress. I urge you to reconsider legacy, not as an exception, but as a child-centered decision aligned with the science that this district has previously upheld. Thank you.
Kristin Caminiti.
Since February 1st, more than nine months ago, every member of this proposed split-articulated part of Nantucket has been living with a pit in our stomach. We were impacted in all of WXYZ's initial proposals and both of Dr. Bedell's proposals. We are the only community for which that is true. For nine months, we have crunched the numbers, we have emailed, we have shown up. At your last meeting, we gained new insight into what exactly is motivating this school Board to think they have to split the Nantucket community. We have since provided well-sourced documentation about what the state laws say about how funding school projects actually works. You've been provided email verification directly from staff members at the IAC, showing that our understanding of how funding works is correct. And using that new evidence, many people tonight have spoken clearly about how overutilization in Crofton schools does not negatively impact funding at other schools. So I am begging you, please don't make this an exercise in futility. I have to believe that when you held your last Board meeting, and then you decided to hold two more public hearings, that you did so with a true desire to give the community an opportunity to dig deeper and provide you with new insight that you didn't have before, and that is exactly what we have all done. It is my sincere hope that you did not hold these hearings just so you could say that you did. We've done everything to prove that split articulating Nantucket is wrong. We examined and reexamined the data, we've shown our work, we've risen to the task of understanding the many complexities of this process in great detail, and we've reached out to the people who know better than we do, the IAC, to verify our understanding. We are now asking you to do your part. Please make a decision based on the correct understanding of funding laws, and don't prolong this painful process. Please do not split articulate the Nantucket community. It isn't necessary, it doesn't benefit anyone, and it would simply be cruel, heartless, and misinformed at this point. Thank you.
Hudson Adamcheck.
I'm here to speak against split articulation from Nantucket Elementary School and ask to reconsider legacy options for juniors and seniors. My name is Hudson Adamcheck. I'm a junior at Crofton High School and captain of the cross-country team. You heard my sister Peyton speak at a prior Board meeting explaining how this would impact her most crucial college preparation year, her junior year. I'm here to fight for her to stay at Crofton with me and to keep us together as any big brother would do. Peyton, I am also in the Avid program, and as a student athlete, I would love for my sister to stand alongside me on senior night next year wearing the same Crofton uniform. We are asking you to elevate student voices and consider how this would change and impact not just the students this year, but every year moving forward. You and my sister both play soccer and know the importance of teamwork. As a representative, you are the team captain and represent the students. Our team is the students of Anaron County, and we ask you to fight and help keep us together. To the entire Board, you have heard the evidence to remove split articulation from Nantucket and have a legacy option for juniors and seniors. It is the right thing to do. We do not want to move Crofton to Arundel. Please keep Crofton together. It's where we belong. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board, I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone for coming out and advocating and testifying this evening for this first public hearing. We will be holding a second public hearing, it'll be public hearing number two on Phase 2 redistricting. That will take place Monday evening, November the 17th, a 6:00 PM hearing here at the Board Room. Once again, thank you all so much for being here this evening. Please drive safely, have a great night. Good night.